Mr. Woodman is here tonight. Is she here?
Claire.
Claire, how are you? Come on up and you can meet everybody here. We have a certificate for you.
Okay. Okay, oh, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations and thank you very much.
Mr. Lyons, if I could just make a comment?
Please.
I think it's so important, you know, we always try to recognize our schools, the schools as well as the students, but it's also so important to recognize the fabulous teachers that we have. So we want to thank you, Claire, so much for coming tonight and being part of this program. Thank you.
All right, next. She was.
Is she here? Oh, I'm sorry. Does that know if you can come up too? Or just wave to all of us? I'm sorry, I missed you. Is Diego here as well? No, okay. A hello to him as well. Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is public comments. Mr. Kassimis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public comments section, we have a couple of guidelines. First of all, you have three minutes. When you have 30 seconds left, I will wave my hand, so you can please close. We ask that all your comments be civil. When I call your name, please come up to the podium. And for the tape recording, we need your name and your address. So first person up is Ms. Suhaney.
Hi. Suhaney, 7 Christopher Lane in Norwalk. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention the M-class reading progress reports that were brought to the district by Dr. Marx four years ago in 2011. Those, if you notice, they're really clear, they're very parent-friendly, and they're very informative. They should, they're meant to be given out to all K-3 parents at least three times a year. They're part of Dr. Rivera's early literacy plan, and they're also one of the tools to be used to close the achievement gap by 2020. So I hope you'll take a look at them and, uh, just take a look at them, and I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Okay, that's all that's signed up.
That's it.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report, and it's our first report from our new interim, James Connolly. Mr. Connolly, over to you.
Good evening. I hope I'm your, your only interim. When you, when you go to your, your permanent superintendent selection. This is my actual first day as superintendent. I did spend two weeks, that was interrupted by two snowstorms, with the administration and with Dr. Rivera in really trying to learn the district, meet with some of the staff, as well as some of the other stakeholders that we work with, the Dahlia Foundation and folks like that. So I really have to commend the Board of Education here for developing this two-week transition. As you know, I've been in a lot of interim positions, this is the first time that I've had this comprehensive a, a transition period. And I think that goes to what the board really wants to do during this period, and that's to continue the continuity. My coming in here is not to start a whole new regime, but rather to continue the initiatives, the partnerships, and the good work that the district is already doing. And I think that's very important. I see my role here as one of continuity. I see my role here as a bridge between Dr. Rivera and whoever you select as a new superintendent in, in the late spring, so that all of these things don't stop. I just want to make it very, very clear that I'm committed to work with you and to work with the community, as well as the staff, and making sure that there are no hiccups, that these, that the initiatives, that this community is endorsed. They're just not Dr. Rivera's initiatives, they're the Norwalk community's initiatives, that they, they continue. I also, I also want to thank some of the people that really helped me in, in my few days here in getting acclimated. Obviously, the whole cabinet, but in particular, Tony, who, Tony and I become a, either four o'clock or five o'clock conference call in the morning. I think we, more of them than I want to, I would like, but it's wonderful hearing Tony's voice at five o'clock in the morning. What should we do? Do we close, or do we, do we delay? But that's all important, because I think going into a district is very important. I understand the institutional history, I understand the relationships, and so that my coming in here will be seamless as, as we possibly can. Couple of other things I just wanted to mention, and I see myself also beyond continuing the initiatives. A part of my role, as I see, is also to affirm the good work that's going on here. We have dedicated teachers, administrators, who do good work every day, and it's important that that work be affirmed and, and be spotlighted. So you'll find me during my tenure here in also pointing out to the community, as well as pointing out to the board, some really good things we have, and recognizing the creativity of so many of our staff members. And, you know, just a little while ago, you, there was one example, Ms. Woodhouse's work. The two other things I just want to be sure that the community understands, the interim in front of my title does not mean I'm just warming a seat. I've always taken the position that as an interim superintendent, I'm as accountable and as active as a permanent superintendent. So I just want to assure the community and assure the board that interim is there, but it, it doesn't mean stop, it doesn't mean coast. To me, it means continuing what the district needs to be doing, and that's continuing the initiatives that we talked about earlier. And lastly, I expect myself to be, I expect the community to see me in the schools. I expect to be inclusive as much as I can with the various partners, both internally, within the, the Norwalk Board of Education organization, as well as the many, many stakeholders. I, sometimes you have to sit back, but Norwalk is a unique community with, with stakeholders. I don't want to mention all of the groups, but there, there is a tremendous amount of, of interest, of support, of creativity for what goes on in your schools. So I want all those folks to realize that during my tenure here, I'm going to be inclusive, I'm going to be reaching out to them, I'm going to be understanding the, some of the initiatives that they are supporting, sometimes financially, sometimes from a, from a public point of view. And I just want to assure them that we're not going to miss a beat. We'll continue with all of those. And I, for the staff, expect to see me in the schools. I really want to interact with the teachers, I want to visit classrooms, I want to get to know students, so that my style is to be as visible as I possibly can be, and out of the office ducking emails and that sort of thing for a good part of every day. And I just look forward to hopefully a very productive and a very successful and a very inclusive and collaborative tenure during my nine, my four months or five months that I'll be here. So I'm, I'm thrilled. And one of the groups I want to recognize right now is Norwalk mentors. As you probably all know, February is Mentor Month. I'm not familiar, except for reading some of the things that were, is relevant about the mentee pro, mentor program here in Norwalk, but I'm familiar with a mentor program in other communities, and they have been so vital, and they've made really impressive, impressive impacts in a very, very positive way on the, on the lives of so many students that have participated in the mentor program. So I think at this point, we're going to have a report from the, from the Norwalk mentor program. And there's one other item on the agenda, and it's kind of premature, so as I asked the chairman earlier, we're really not ready even for information purposes to present the 1516 calendar. I, I really didn't get a chance to vet it and to meet with some of the, some of the people that I should meet with before we present a calendar. So I asked the board to just ignore that item for tonight, and we will have a straw, we'll have a recommendation for a school calendar at our second meeting in February. So we're now going to get a report, I hope they're here, from the Norwalk.
Nancy Pratt is going to come up and bring us up to speed on the mentoring program here in Norwalk.
Thank you, Mike. We just wanted to give a little bit of an update about the Norwalk mentor program and mentoring here in Norwalk. I think most everybody knows that the Norwalk mentor program is a school-based mentoring program here. Our mentors are matched with students in the Norwalk public schools, and they meet for one hour a week at school during the school day. So during that time that they're together, they might do anything. They're really just there to be an advocate and a friend to the student. So during that time, they might play games, they might do some crafts, they might do some schoolwork, or just spend their time talking with each other. They do whatever the two of them decide together that they want to do. As director of the Norwalk mentor program, I work closely with the liaison at each school. In most cases, it's the school social worker, it's whoever's been designated at the school to work with me. When we match a mentor to a student, there's, that student gets some extra individualized attention, which is usually something that that student in particular needs. Often, the mentor's the first person that hears about a problem and can bring the issue to the, the attention of the school staff. And the mentor can help in finding solutions to the problems, or in getting assistance for the student in whatever they might need, whether it be signing up for an after-school program, or seeing what's available, or anything else. Basically, how the program works, I recruit new mentors, do the trainings, do all the background checks that are necessary, and when we're all set, then I refer that mentor to the liaison at the school. The liaison then selects a student that they think could use a mentor and would be a good match for that particular person. Once the, they then have to get a permission slip signed by the parent and make sure that the student and the parent are on board with being in the program. And then they arrange for a meeting between the mentor and the new mentee. And they make sure that both of them are comfortable as far as being with each other, and tell them where they can meet at the school and those kinds of things. I arrange for training and networking workshops for the mentors on an ongoing basis, and maintain all the records and so on. We have a database, we keep in touch with the mentors on a regular basis, through emails, through phone calls. All the mentors are also able to log notes in that I, I and the liaison can look at to see if there's any great things, or any red flags, or whatever's going on with them. I arrange for a couple of annual events, like what you read probably the other day or heard about. We have a couple of annual events for the mentors and mentees during the school year, where they meet outside of school. It gives them a chance to get together outside of school, and also gives the, the parents of the student a chance to meet the mentor. Some of the benefits that we see, increased sense of self-confidence in the students, they're better able to express their feelings, they're more trusting in other people, improve grades in at least one subject, better relationships with their peers, better school attendance. Those are the kinds of things that we see in the students that are matched with a mentor in the program. I want to introduce Robin Brednitzer. She's one of the social workers at one of our middle schools, and she can tell you a little bit more. Robin is on the, our, our Norwalk mentor program advisory council. She's a mentor herself and the social worker. So I'll be brief. I just want to say, from personal experience and professional experience, this, I've seen and watched this program change lives. I've seen, I've matched kids with mentors who had low self-esteem, who didn't have many friends, who had low social skills, and I've literally seen them blossom before my eyes. As, just as importantly, I've seen the mentors make a connection with the child, and that changes their life as well. The only complaint I have about the program is there isn't enough money, and there isn't enough mentors, and we can match them to mentees all day long. So the support of the Norwalk Board of Ed is greatly appreciated when we look at this program and literally how it changes lives. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll be brief, but very straightforward, as usual. I want to say thank you to the people in this room. We've had a lot of conversations, especially with the mayor, who's taken on the, the mentor challenge through United Way. But I do want to point out some pretty specific points that are bulleted here for you. I was really good to hear that you want to continue initiatives and that you believe in the mentoring program. It shouldn't be a surprise, this is the oldest mentor program in the state and one of the highest quality. We have been, we were, we volunteered, one of four organizations volunteered to be assessed, and we were assessed at an extremely high level of quality. What you do have, though, is a challenge facing us with mentoring. As anybody who's familiar with mentoring would know, there used to be seven mentor programs in Norwalk. There's now four. Most of those programs are between 20, maybe 50 mentor-mentee matches. Ours has about 220. We, as Nancy spoke about, has done a really good job making sure the quality's there. We've been working with Susan Weinberger, who's the, works with the National Mentoring Institute, and we've brought that quality to what we think is at a very exceptional rate. What you'll see in here is something that shows that the, for school-based help, the mentor-mentee match cost per match is about $1,000. Ours is about $500 and does not affect quality. The challenges in the next coming months are very real. As the executive director of the Human Service Council, who is in charge of the mentor program, we have a huge problem facing us. We cannot face this problem alone, so we are hoping for the support from the Board of Education, from the city, to continue this good mentoring program. There are no federal, state, or city funding for mentoring. It is difficult to maintain the level of children that we currently have for mentor-mentee matches, and we do everything in our power to make sure that happens. We've reached out to new people in the neighborhood who work at Excel Global, who've decided to help. We've found new foundations to continue this program, but we have taken about $40,000 in cuts over to last and June, when two foundations no longer are, are giving out the kind of money they were in the past. But we made up a good portion of that. What other challenges we have? In terms of growth, there's a huge need out there. We'd love to go to 400 mentor-mentee matches. It's not going to happen unless there's some other type of sustainable funding. And the, so that's pretty much it. I mean, I think the other last thing I want to say is how the schools, I'm sure you all know, use this as a, a tool to help. It should not be something that gets in the way of helping in the schools, or an extra thing. It should be a tool for social workers to use to help them in their work. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Anthony DeLoro from the Human Services Council.
All right. That completes superintendent's report. Yes, Mr. Kassimis?
You had, you had mentioned about the 4:00 AM wake-up calls. A lot of, a lot of parents out there would really like to know what goes into making the decision to delay or cancel. Is there any way that you can describe the process? I'm sure we have to bring this to the board. Is it a flip of the coin, or what?
No, I, um...
Can the rest of us at least understand?
Yeah, there, there's a, there's a pretty organized scientific method, and Tony has been handling that for, for us during my time, and I think he also did it with, when Dr. Rivera was here. And Tony will check in with me, give me all of his, all of his information, and then we will jointly make a decision. Is it safe to open school? Do we need a delay, or do we need a closing? Now, some of the things that go into this, we belong to a, a forecasting service, John Biajini, who I find very accurate, and I've used, and he's very sensitive to, to school departments, and he also does forecasting for public works departments. So he will give us, he'll usually have a, he'll send us fax information via email on incoming storms. He'll also usually host a, a 4:00 AM or 4:30 AM conference call with superintendents from different geographic areas in the state. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Tony, we're part of the Western groups. That includes districts like Weston, going up toward Danbury, Newtown, that whole group. That's one thing. The second thing, and very, very important to me, is checking with the city officials, basically the public works department, to see what the road conditions are, number one. And number two, what they can do in a very, very candid way, or what they're doing right now. You'll get many things. I've found, sometimes we'll say if you'll delay school, it gives us an opportunity to fully treat the roads and make them safe. In Norwalk's case, we also have to look at parking lots, and the public works department is the department that, that clears our lots in conjunction with our custodians. It's kind of a complicated thing here in Norwalk. It's public works clears the lots, the custodians shovel 25 feet up from the building, and then Parks and Recreation takes over from there. So we want to make sure all of that, all of those things are coordinated. And quite frankly, the bottom line to me is safety. And, you know, you try, and you try to get this decision out as early as you can. I mean, I don't want to be forced into a decision that we've, until I have all the information, and I feel that we're making a decision that is appropriate and, and is safe for our students and our staff. We try to get that done by 5:00 o'clock. At times, it doesn't happen very often, but at times you'll, you can, you'll sometimes make that decision the night before, if it's just so obvious that, you know, a storm is going to hit, and, and we'll try to get it out the night before. But normally, it's a, it's a lot of work collecting information between, I say, 3:30 and 5:00 in the morning. Tony is also on computer with what the other districts are doing along in, in the greater Norwalk area. So you have that, plus the, plus Dr. Biajini, Biajinis, plus we have what we're getting from our local, from public works and, and other folks. And it's, and most of the time, you know, we can't, you can't please everyone. But our attempt is to make sure we make a decision that ensures the safety of, of students, both driving to school and, and going to the school on buses.
Yes, please.
And Mike had his hand up, too. Okay, can I, just a quick follow-up? Just a quick follow-up. Yeah, I'm over here. Just a quick follow-up. You had mentioned DPW custodians and Parks and Rec. All three are involved to clearing our schools.
Yep.
So it's my understanding that the custodians do up to 25 feet.
Correct.
At the 26-foot mark, the Parks and Recs comes in.
Correct.
And then after that, DPW comes in. So it takes three different groups to clean our schools.
No, DPW does the lots.
Okay.
Their, their job is to plow the parking lots.
And Parks and Recs?
Sidewalks, they don't do anything else.
Parks and Recs does what?
I believe, Tony, they do, they're, they extend sidewalks and that sort of thing beyond the 25 foot.
So if, if one of those groups just kind of doesn't make it, then we close the school?
No, we try to.
It seems to be a lot of people involved, different groups to do, just to do a cleaning.
The, the main one, quite frankly, is public works. If they can, if they can get the lots cleaned, or our own custodians, you know, if the lots are going to be cleaned, they're ready to shovel out, and, and I guess it's worked up till now. I've only been here a day, but the coordination, the coordination, I guess, it's difficult. I mean, it would be great if we had one agency and said, you know, your job is to clear the lots, clear the sidewalks, and, and everything else. But historically, I don't know the reason. Well, I understand the reason with the custodians. In many districts, depending on the union contract, the custodians might be responsible for total cleaning of sidewalks. Normally, for lots, it's either public works, or if the district has their own snowplows, or in many cases, in some of the smaller towns I've worked in, the, they've contracted the third-party people to do the plowing.
Thank you. Mike?
Now, already I've lost my mind.
Sorry, Mike. Think back.
Snow, snow.
DPW. Recreation parks.
There we go.
See?
I know what I want to bring up. There are some, you know, because there's so many ways parents are contacted by NPS, you know, but the most consistent is the 5:00 AM wake-up call. And some parents are like, hey, I know the night before, or I got an email, or whatever. How can I get myself off this phone list? So I was in touch with Brenda and Ralph, and it was in the heat of the moment, there was a lot of stuff going on. But I, I am continuing to get questions from, from parents about this. So I know there's no easy answer, manually remove them, but if there was something in the works, Brenda, or if Ralph needs a reminder, that issue is out there, and there are some people who would like that option.
Well, this is, this is not Norwalk, but this is the experience I had in Nogatuck, where I just left and I had a nasty winter. We went to School Messenger, as Norwalk did, as Norwalk does. Initially, the first complaint I got was, I have three kids in the school. They're taking the information from Power School. And so what they would get is three individual calls, which drove them nuts, you know, the, we resolve, we resolve that with School Messenger, where they're able to harvest and, and take out duplicate calls. So you'll get one call. The second issue we had, and I don't know if we fully resolved it, was some people wanted texting instead of a phone call. And that's what I've talked to Ralph to see if there's something we can do with that here. I think, I, the duplicate call thing is easy to take care of. Getting a call instead of texting is something I think we'll, we'll look at, or asking, or people have to sign up for texting. And that may be one way to, you know, to bring the complaints down. But we, but I think as a district, I think we have a responsibility to officially get out to, you know, a legal responsibility, quite frankly, to get out to families and parents officially what we're doing, you know, as far as, as far as cancellations, as far as delays, and as far as early dismissals. But, you know, there's a couple of the complaints that you've mentioned here, they're, you know, they've happened in other districts, and we've tried to resolve them.
Okay.
Mike?
Yes?
I'm sorry. Just going back to that, though, as a parent with three kids in the system, now it's just two, one moved on, I would look at Channel 12 News, I'd see if I got a phone call, I would look on my email. So I think if we have different ways, but also something that's consistent, especially when you have kids that are in different schools, in multiple schools.
Yeah, well, the, the one way would be School Messenger, and getting out either by phone, or if we can, by, for people that want it, by text.
And one other thing, Mike, if I could just add, the mentoring program. I just wanted to see if it's possible, Brenda, if, I know, I think we had it on our webpage at one point with the mayor and Dr. Rivera, or something. If we can maybe get that back on our, our webpage, or our public schools, and maybe your email addresses, I mean, I think that would be really key, especially if we have families coming into Norwalk, already in Norwalk. I mean, I know this mentoring program, I know, has been around for many, many years. It's a fabulous program that we want to continue to support. But I think if we can get that word out more, and I think a lot of families do look at our, our webpage, and if we had something in there, I think would be important, especially with your names and emails, would be fabulous, I think.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Tonight is item 2A, approval of personnel, and 2B, approval of budget transfers, which are described in the packet. Is there a motion to approve? Kassimis moves. Is there a second? Ms. Keys, any discussion? Hearing none. All, I'm sorry, Ms. Keys, go right ahead.
No, just a quick discussion. I just, I know that we have several teachers that are retiring, and there's two that I know quite well. Claire Zalinski, who is at Columbus, and Julie Benson, who is an AT teacher, who I know works at different schools. And they both have been around for many, many years. Excellent, excellent teachers. Sad to see them go. But I just wanted to say how much we appreciated everybody here and how hard they've worked, and good luck in their future goals.
Julie Benson, she was a terrific teacher, and really gave an impression. And I'm sorry, I'd heard she was retiring, I was ready to say.
Okay. Anything else? No? Okay, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the consent calendar, please indicate. And it's unanimous. Thank you. Next item is approval for designation of February as Black History Month. Is there a motion to approve resolution? Mr. Kassimis moves. Is there a second? Ms. Harris, second. Is there discussion on the item? Okay. Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote approving the February 1 to February 28, 2015, as Black History Month. 2015 as Black History Month for the Norwalk Public Schools. All in favor, please indicate. And that is also unanimous. All right, next is approval of signature change for 2014-15 Agreement for Children Nutrition Program. This is just a technicality to...
I'm coming in and that would replace Dr. Rivera as the signature.
Correct. It's just to put Mr. Connolly in as the signatory for those contracts. Is there a motion to that effect? Mr. Kassimus moves. Second. Ms. Keys, discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the motion? And that is unanimous. Okay. Next item is approval of PA system replacement at Nathan Hale Middle School capital purchase. Rich, you want to, you might as well stay up for the one right after it too. Give us the lowdown on the PA system.
Sure. As part of the school safety security plan, one of the items that was an issue to be addressed in our capital plan was the PA systems district-wide. There's a lot that goes into an RFP that takes a lot of time to actually get it going through. We have to get feedback from the state. We have to do walkthroughs. We have to do analysis of all the equipment. Nathan Hale was deemed the school really in most serious need of a PA system replacement, so we issued that RFP separately from the district so that we could expedite the replacement at Nathan Hale. We had six firms bid. The firm that we selected was not only the lowest bidder, but a bidder with very qualified references, a company that's done work in Norwalk, both for the school system and for the city. So we feel very confident in advancing advanced security technology. If the Board of Ed is to approve it, we are prepared to bring it to the land use tomorrow and then the council weather permitting on the 10th.
Weather permitting, that's right. All right. Chairman, entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Mr. Kassimus moves. Is there a second? Ms. Harris seconds. Any discussion? I'll just note that this is one of, a number of security enhancement projects which are going forward. You remember last meeting or the meeting before that, we approved new blinds for all the schools. This one is the first step in getting all of the PA systems in the school system totally functional. I mean, obviously, if you have some kind of an incident in the school system, adequate communication inside the schools is critical. And then, of course, the, the next one will be the window film, also part of that process. I'm, I'm very pleased to see that, having appropriated the capital budget money for this, that we're rapidly moving ahead with these projects. And then, of course, we've already completed the project, I believe, with all of the new locks for the school system. All right. If there's nothing else, so we'll proceed to a vote to approve this resolution. All in favor? And that is unanimous. All right. Next one is the film for the windows. Rich?
We issued an RFP similar to the PA systems for window film. This window film, mile our film to cover the windows. We had seven companies bid and reviewing the bids, we had two companies that we disqualified as they did not meet the specifications within the bid. The company that we are recommending did have experience. They had high-quality product, favorable references, and we feel confident moving forward with this company as well.
Okay. Chairman, entertain a motion to approve the purchase. Mr. Kassimus moves. Is there a second? Ms. Keys, discussion?
Do you want me to share?
Mr. Kassimus?
Being on the City Safety Committee, I had an opportunity to actually witness the way the film actually protects and what it does, how it responds. And it's pretty amazing how it'll, it'll absorb the impact of a bullet, several bullets actually. And it, what, it's not designed to stop somebody from coming in. It's designed to slow them down and give the police department enough time to get there and catch the person. So I think it's great that we're finally getting it. It's been like two years, I think, since we, a year and a half since we first saw the demonstration. So I'm glad we got this going.
Yeah, this is, this is basically target hardened, as they say.
Correct.
Good. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the resolution? Please indicate. And that is unanimous. Okay. Thanks, Rich. We're going to take 7A, the school calendar off, so Mr. Connolly and the staff can work on that some more and we'll put that on our next agenda.
Can I make a suggestion?
Certainly.
Is it possible to come up with a two-year calendar?
It's possible. It's an option.
That's going to run us right into that. Well, we'll have to make sure.
Well, it might be right into the state law with the coming calendar.
Which at this point, it may be easy to do that. And the reason why I'm thinking that is a lot of people have vacations towards the end of August and they, you know, I think it'll, it'll help them juggle their vacation time if they're looking ahead, at least two years ahead of time.
We'll see. I mean, if we can.
Okay, I just throw it out. That's all. Just an idea.
I just want to put it against the RESC, which is SESS. You know, they're the ones that are putting together our so-called common calendar for this region, but, you know, Tony and I'll take a look at it and see if we can do something.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right. And next item on the agenda is committee and representative reports. I started with Jack last time. We'll start with Rosa this time. Any report from finance?
No, our finance meeting coming up on February 11th. I will ask that an item be placed on the agenda from this actual agenda. I'd like to see if the staff would pull something together on special ed. I just think you need to take a look at that and anything that you can bring that would...
Okay. So special ed funding and anything that would relate to funding a special ed program?
That's a concern, this transfer. There's a number of things that are happening so far this year. It gives a little history.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good. All right. Now, Mr. Kassimus reports.
I don't think I have any.
Okay, nothing. Curriculum, I, I'm not going to be able to have a meeting next week. I was expecting to have one to go over K5 literacy, but Maureen Ruby isn't going to be available. So at our following meeting in March, we're going to get a full K5 update from Ms. Ruby and also an update from the science specialist on what's going on in the science curriculum. Let's see. Ms. Keys, policy?
Policy, our next meeting will be, it's usually the first and third of the month, but due to our, our board meeting changing to the 24th, our policy will be also the 24th. I mentioned that, it's that last meeting, which will be at 6:30 PM and then I'll have an update after that.
Okay. All right. Ms. Harris, any report from Norwalk ACTS or any of those folks? No? Okay. Jack, what's going on with facilities?
Nothing yet.
All right. Actually, we just saw a lot of what's going on with facilities. All right, so we will move on. Any board member announcements? Ms. Keys?
We, both Mike Barvis and I attended the superintendent search at Brown McMahon High School last week and unfortunately, it was a great presentation that we had through Pro Act, but we didn't have a high turnout. And I'm contributing that to the weather that we've had. We've had a lot of cancellations. I know we have cancellations for the other ones and then we're revising that again and changing the dates. I would have liked to see more of a turnout, so I'm hoping that for the next two sessions that we're going to be having, I believe one at Grace Baptist Church and one at Norwalk High School.
No, no, Calvary Baptist.
Calvary, I'm sorry, Calvary and Norwalk High School, Monday and Tuesday of next week.
Correct. Monday night, 7 o'clock, Norwalk High School Library. And then Tuesday night, 7 o'clock, Calvary Baptist Church will be the two sessions. They should each go about two hours. And any member of the public, the community is willing, is willing to come out. We hope you do. There will be Spanish translator available at both meetings. And, you know, we're just looking to see what people would like to see in the next permanent superintendent.
I think, Mr. Chairman, one other thing, the, the response on the online, I think, Brenda, we've had, what, 300?
At last check, it was 300.
I'm sorry?
Good.
300?
And the online survey.
300 responses so far?
Yes.
Good. That's very good. All right, so those, those will be, will be going on Monday and Tuesday, God willing.
Weather permitting.
Check with Tony.
Please, Tony, hold the snow off for those two days. And, and we, we really want to hear what, what members of the public would like to tell us.
Just something real quick. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention this earlier. I got a lot of emails today from parents that had to take their kids to the bus stops and I think, I briefly talked to this with Mr. Dono. Is there a way that we can get at least the bus stops cleared off so the kids are not waiting in the streets? That was a question that came up a lot today because a lot of kids are walking out in the street. And I know it's a lot of snow. It, it's hard to please everybody, but is there something that we can do specifically for the younger, little, little kids? I guess I can try to address that. It's a very complex issue and a lot of the bus stops are right around on private sidewalks. And I think we need to do a better job of coordinating that and perhaps looking at where those bus stops are. It's not ever been an easy task because people are not always able to clear their sidewalks within the timeframe after it stops snowing, especially if they're elderly and they're living alone, living on a fixed income. So we've been struggling with that issue for a while, but this is really an important issue that you raise. And I think that sitting down with Department of Public Works, sitting down with Parks and Rec, sitting down with David Chockley from the Norwalk Coalition of Neighborhoods, he's kind of works with them, we should try to come up with some sort of a process where we can at least clean those areas by the bus stops because it is critically important and the kids are not standing out in the roadway. I'll, I'll take a look at that. And a lot of these, a lot of these kids are so small that the, the drivers can't see them over the banks. Right. And it's scary for a parent. So thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. We will move on now to...
I just want to, I have one.
Oh, yeah.
I just want to mention today that I went to Kendall School at 2:00 for the Great Kindness Challenge that they're engaging and they engaged in, I guess, all last week. And it was quite remarkable to see young kids sitting so attentive and they were learning kindness and they're learning respect for each other and they're learning social skills. And it's just another example of the lengths that our teachers and our staff go through in order to help mold our children into young adults eventually and to learning to fit into society and be a part of society and learning respect for each other and learning that bullying is bad and learning that acts of kindness are always better than meanness or bullying. So I want to congratulate Mr. Dietrio and the staff at Kendall School for putting on a really remarkable program. Just wanted to mention that.
All right. So that's, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of January 20, 2015. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Kassimus moves. Ms. Keys seconds. Any changes, corrections?
Yeah, it was pretty good.
Hearing none. We proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate. And, and Jack, you were not there, I assume, so you're abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay, so that's unanimous approval with one abstention from Mr. Chairman. All right. We were going to have a superintendent search update executive session, but we got nothing to update because all the sessions with the public got canceled. So unless anybody has an urgent need to go in and talk about this, it hasn't happened yet, I think we can probably skip that one. All right. So that leaves only the adjournments. Is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Kassimus, is there a second? Ms. Keys, all in favor? And the meeting is adjourned. Rick, Jack, I need you to sign something.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
One.
Great.
How was that?
My day around.